So we'll go ahead and get started then. Start with our pledge and then a prayer. Commissioner Patton?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Lord, we come before you this evening in the most humble manner we know, ask you to bless us tonight and look down upon us and to give us compassion and understanding if we discuss and decide issues for our citizens, maybe we make decisions out of the best interest of each individual and for the whole community as a whole. Bless Sandy as she is recovering from her surgery, may she have a speedy recovery and be back to health, and protect Kevin as he travels back from his vacation, keep him safe. Go with us tonight, Father, bless us in all we do, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Welcome everybody out tonight. First item is the approval of minutes.
Move to approve of the minutes.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Approval of bills.
I make a motion with approval of paying bills.
Circle.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Under new business, first item is new checking account.
That is something we have to start with the online payments. We put a separate account for that since there's so many different things going on with the online payments, so we'll just put it all into that account and transfer.
It all dumps into that account from Stripe and then you split it out.
What do we need to approve?
We need to approve allowing her to open another.
I make a motion we allow her to have it do the account.
Actually, it'd be Amy's signature. It ends with a signature from Amy, Paul, and myself. Amy will ask for that, so.
Oh, she wants all that on there? Okay.
Well, let's do it like this. I make a motion and we set that count up in accordance to our standard regulations.
I'll fix the text to make sure we got all that. We can go on up there.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Window cleaning quote.
She had a guy come in and buy a business license. He started a window cleaning business and he was interested in cleaning our windows here. It's $175 per visit and that would be a monthly fee. He would come once a month.
Who is it?
Christian Burgins. Never heard of him. It's busy prep. It's a home and business detailing service.
Did you get the other windows all right, others around that whole place or just these?
I'm not sure. I think it was just these. What it was. I can get in contact with him and see if it was all the businesses, but.
Who cleans them now?
The guys when we get time. But now if it's something we need to get done, I would like to take a chance to see what it costs to get set up for before we start outsourcing.
Do you want to?
I'd like to get a quote on what material we need for us to clean before we start outsourcing.
Oh, yeah, I think we've got people that can do it. That's why I was just wondering. I thought, well, maybe they've never been cleaned. They look pretty clean to me.
I don't know the price of window clean, but that seems a little high there for a month.
Kind of what I thought.
It would be just once a month, $175. It says inside and out, so.
Well, we'll call him back if you don't, if you need to, let's see it with Larry first.
Yeah, let's, we'll put that on hold. If everybody's okay with that. Alma Randolph Alleyway on third.
Yes, they're in the process of selling the property, her mother's property. There is an old abandoned alley that runs to the mini park.
Does it go all the way through to 62? No, do we block it?
It goes to, well, actually, First Street is what we call it.
Well, yeah, you're not, it's not 62.
When I first started, there used to be a walkover bridge there.
You remember that?
But anyway, the piece of property, I think, belonged to her aunt and uncle, has no driveway access. And she was wanting to know about the alley and what our process was to give a deed alley up. So I told her, I said, you know, we'd go 50/50. I said, but if it's going to be for the driveway for the house, you know, we may as well do 100% of the property since you would be getting both sides anyway. And she says she would rather have that going to her aunt and uncle's property. And I don't recall the name that she said, but I can find that out.
And she knows she'd pay all the survey looks.
Yes.
If she's willing to do it, I had no problem with it.
I don't either. Does that need to be in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we allow Alma Randolph to have it surveyed and take that over.
I'll second.
Good motion is second, any further discussion?
That'll be the alley from East Third Street to the ditch between East Third and East First.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm here to represent Alma.
Oh.
I just wanted to see what the decision was today.
When I talked to Alma last week, she wanted the deed, the alley, to go to her aunt and uncle's property.
Right.
For the driveway access.
Correct.
What was her name?
Her aunt's name?
Yes. Because it would be on that deed.
Not the same last name. It's a different last name. I can.
Put that.
Text her real quick.
Yeah, it was already approved.
We've approved it.
We've approved it, so.
So what does she need to do now? Is she going to be yelled something in the next few days or?
She will have to get with our attorney.
Okay.
To do a quick clean deed.
Okay.
And if she's wanting to add that to her deed of the house, she may as well want to have it surveyed. That would be up to her.
He has sold her house.
Okay.
As of last week.
Okay.
So how is this going to work? She just gets the deed transferred to her name and then she?
We'll instruct our attorney.
Yeah, we'll let AV take care of that, I'm not sure.
If we can just get the name of her auntie, then we can advise our attorney that when she goes in to see AV.
Would you want me to step outside, give her a call real quick? She might be busy doing something.
Yeah, if I have.
Oh, there she is. She just texted me back. Ida Wright.
Wright. I remember the Wright name now.
We will pass it to our attorney when he shows up here directly and.
Fantastic.
Just have her give AV call and set up an appointment and.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you said something because I'd hate her wait very end and then.
Well, she walked in, she said, that's what I'm here for, that's why I waited to go.
Oh, okay.
If she'd walked in, I would have had a clue who she was.
I didn't.
Didn't know who she was.
Okay.
Still.
Well, neither. Just for Amazon, okay. Next item's Housing Authority Board. They've asked for an appointment and Joel did call me and had someone that they talked to that was interested in it, so, and that would be Debbie Gilstrap, so we need approval of that.
Move to appoint Debbie Gilstrap to the Housing Authority Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Item five, surplus equipment.
Yes, we've got several items that we need to either put up for sale or take to the scrapyard or just throw away. Some of them I have written down here as we're going to have a police car. What's that date on the new car?
They had called, I picked one about three weeks ago, and he said, I'll tell you back when I know something. Okay, he didn't call back.
So we're going to have a police car. We have a lawnmower that has been broken for a couple of years. We've been stealing parts off of it to fix the others. We've got to have a couple of garage doors we need to throw away. We had bought a new air compressor for the water department last year. Our oven, we can go ahead and put it up for sale or haul it off. Our old leaf truck, it finally played out. We need to get rid of it. And there's a couple of other items I don't have listed I need to find out.
Furniture?
Furniture, no, we already gave them, rid most of that.
Okay.
So that's gone. I held on to it for a little piece of time, so it's time to move some stuff.
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Is?
They dead bells and empty.
Is some of it worth selling or is it just mostly be better to take to the scrapyard?
The police car, of course, can be sold. The air compressor can be sold. You know, the little dump truck we have, it's got a spring broke, so it leans. It uses three quarters of oil every day when we do the leaf route. Brakes, there's no brake, hardly any brakes on it, so it's, it probably is, it'd be hauled over there. Just, you know, so it's, it's gone.
I'll say AV.
You know what I?
But I know our auditors, when we get rid of something, they want to, they want a detailed list of what we're getting rid of, so I can get VIN numbers and whatever off of it as well.
Is that detailed enough and then other miscellaneous items?
Hang on, I'll have VIN numbers for the next meeting to begin, so.
Well, we'll have VIN numbers for.
I just make a motion that Larry be able to, the items he named and miscellaneous items, be able to sell either for scrap or outright according to his discretion. That too big a motion? Does that leave you enough lead weight to get it done?
I think so, as long as all of you are okay with it. Of course, I have, I have a list of everything.
I'll second it.
Good, we have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Next item is Morrow resignation.
Yes, Jonathan Morrow, that was on a sanitation route. He turned in the resignation last Friday, was his last day of work. He has taken another job, so I ask that we accept his resignation.
Make a motion we accept Morrow's resignation.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes.
You need to advertise for help?
Actually, we have, we have application here. I think we kind of have an open door policy with the police department where we always take, this here is, his name is Shelton Shepherd. We, actually, we had him, we was getting him out as an inmate and he rode the truck. He was dismissed from jail after serving his time and he turned in an application.
He did a good job, of course, I guess.
Well, he was taken to get out, yeah. He's done real well.
Mike, do you know him?
Yeah, his car stemmed from McDonald's. Him and actually a girl that was kids with him, they got in some kind of little verbal disagreement. Anyway, he gets out, he backs out, kind of rolled her down the car. Anyway, he got charged with living in an accident one day, but I think they amended it down and kept it in district court.
Three months is what he served. So there was.
But it's public record.
That's all I know about it. Well, now that's all they're being trouble.
If you're going to be happy with him, I'd say hi.
I think he'd be fine.
It'll be any trouble.
Need to inform a motion as well?
Yeah, starting, hey, I'll have to look and see where we started the last one at.
I think whatever the last one was.
Well, she'll, my name's going one of the minutes. I'll look when we go into closed session.
Okay.
We can put that amount in there though.
Okay.
We all know it's going to be whatever the going rate was. Next item is.
Do we need to vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Next item's Evans resignation.
Yeah, one of our officers, he did not turn in a letter of resignation. He called me Saturday and said that he wouldn't be back. I think he had been offered a job at UK Police Department on the campus. I don't have a letter of resignation, but he told me that he wouldn't be back to work. So however, we don't want to word that in, I guess he resigned.
Were you expecting? I mean, I knew you were expecting, but I mean.
I really didn't expect him to do it that way.
That's why.
I really expected him to give us a couple of weeks' notice.
For a professional person, that's not very good.
But he did, so anyway.
I'm not sure he's a professional as he needs to be, although some things he's pulled.
I would say that UK would turn if they didn't think he was a professional.
I'll.
Well, there's nothing we can do.
No, I just was.
But on work record that he did not give us a, a letter of resignation.
Well, I guess we say we're, I'll move to recognize or accept Evans.
Phony resignation?
Yeah, resignation.
Verbal resignation?
Yeah.
You'll go there?
We handle it. Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Next item's the heaving hatchet's lease.
Yes. Olivia is the woman that he hired to help run this facility. She's from Butler County. We sent her the information, or Shelby sent her the information to give to Tony, is that his name, Tony? Yeah. For him to sign it, we met, she comes back, she wants her name on the contract as well. So we, I reached out to her today and I told her, I said, can you send me some paperwork on where you're part owner, whether it's where they bought it from Chris or whatever? So she sent this message to me, says, perhaps the easiest way is to go on the Secretary of State website and look it up.
What's that tell her to look it up?
I don't think that we should have to do our legwork if, and this was just Larry Carter thinking, if Tony gives us the copy of where she's part owner is one thing, but I'm not going to do the legwork for her.
No, we don't have to do that.
It would hurt my feelings if we.
Tell them, tell them they got till November 1st or we're changing the law.
Yeah, I just table this so she can come up with sort of paperwork.
We've been dealing with this for way too long for something as basic and as simple as this is.
Yeah. I'll send her a picture right now.
Next item's the Brooklyn rental lease.
Yes, she's asking on how much her rent is. I wouldn't spell out her.
Her offer was 250.
Okay. So I guess we, number one, we need to say we're going to rent to her. And set rent, and then I, I don't know.
One-year lease, which she was, she put all this up and made this offer, building as is.
I make a motion we accept Brooklyn rental's offer of 250 with a one-year lease.
Second.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. I will say, I talked to her the other night, she's pretty excited about it.
She is, she is, she's taken to death.
Big plans for the building.
Should do well.
Next item's advertise for a police officer.
Yeah, I don't think, it's kind of like Larry said, but if you all want to, just give me an approval, go ahead and advertise for them all.
I move to approve Mike, advertise for one.
Second.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes. Change anything?
No, things seem to be running rather smoothly right now.
Okay.
I've got nothing important to do.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. One is, pretty basic, they've asked us to do a resolution, proclamation for the community on the National Arts and Humanities Month for October. And I figure they're sitting right here, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it says arts and cultural production accounts for $5,623,273,000 in Kentucky's economy, 2.6% of our economy, contributing to 46,652 jobs in 2020. The national nonprofit arts industry alone generates 27.5 billion in government revenue and 166 billion in economic activity. And generates attendees spend on average of $31.47 per person per event beyond the cost of admission, meals, parking, lodging, making the arts a vital income source for local business. And it's very important to the city of Beverham and the Ohio County for that matter with the arts. So I would like us to go ahead and approve that proclamation.
Is it for a month or a week or?
October, month of October.
I move to put it in the month of October as the.
National Arts and Humanities Month.
There you go.
I'll second.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes.
We do have a water service contract to look at.
Yeah, we'll need to go in.
But AV's not here.
We'll need to go into closed session for that too.
I didn't know if you'd want to go in closed session.
Yeah, we may go ahead and start if he's not here because we need to get moving on it.
Okay.
I've also got a contract here from the Commonwealth of Kentucky. The Outdoor Recreation Programs, the federal government, where we applied for the grant, got the grant for the parking lot paving. It has been approved on the federal level and we've got a contract here to sign with Department of Local Government, and I just need formal approval from this body to sign that contract.
I move to approve the contract with the state for the, whatever it's called.
Department of Local Government.
There you go.
I'll second.
And the amount's $88,084. So we have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same.
For that kind of money, sign it quick.
Yeah. We got it quicker than I expected. A lot of times it's a lot longer than getting it there. And then I have one other thing I just wanted to bring up, not necessarily do any action on the night, but I want you all to be thinking about it because I spoke with this guy when we were at KLC. And we talked to him once before, but the county used to do this. It's a reach alert program where we could set it up, the people within the city limits, we can do a one phone call thing. It's all done automatically. They can get either email, or one, two, or all, text, phone call, email. If there's any kind of issue, we put stuff on the water bill now, but if there's any kind of issue for a boil advisory or.
Ask Dr. School of One Call System.
School, uh-huh. And the county, we, we didn't do it before because the county used to do it.
I think that ran out.
Huh?
I think it ran out.
It, it did.
Or retain.
Charge on it's costly.
Yeah, I think it got gobbled by somebody.
Well, this one is going to cost us $1,350 for the first year because of KLC membership, and then year two and three is $2,875 a year.
There's a lot of things they put on the water bill. People say, I didn't see it. I can't, I can't believe they don't see it on the water bill, but I've heard that before, so it might be something we would try.
I just think it's, with as much as we've got going on, and, and it's an annual cost, there is no contract to sign. You can bop that at the end of any year, so we don't have to do year two and three, but I just think it could be something good. And it can go to like, trying to think, somebody who has parents that live here, but they may live in Lexington, they can get the phone call in Lexington. So if there is an issue with the water or something going on, they know to help, maybe with elderly parents to let them know what's going on, explain to them.
Could have tried, and if it doesn't seem to be panning out and people saying, I'm not getting it, we can, like I said, not drop out. I think I'd like to see us try it.
Yeah, it sounds like a good thing to me.
Well, year one's $1,350.
I move to try, sign for the first year.
First year to 28, the second?
We get a, it's over a 50% discount by being KLC members to try to get you to start. What they're doing is trying to get you to try it and see if it'll work for you. They, they feel like it'll sell itself for the second year.
Do we have to send out notices to sign up for it and how the people will know?
Yeah, they'll work, we'll have to go through all that and get phone numbers and email. You can just say phone, text, or email, or all three.
I mean, we're going, we shouldn't know within that first year if it's going to be beneficial to us, if that's.
Did you make a motion?
I'll be, I'll, that motion.
Say.
Okay, we have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion.
I just want to ask you a question. So when you said about water, Larry, do we have any issue with water? Cause mine was brought to brown today.
It was on your water bill.
Cause I didn't know that.
It was on your water bill.
See, I didn't know that.
Well, the problem with putting it on the water bill is if you have so much on your water bill, it kicks it off.
See, that's what I say, that's one of them things I'd been nice to know.
If it's just like out of town water, you'll have it because you just have your water that shows. But like, if you're in town, you have water, sewer, sanitation, and extra sets bags, it's going to kick it off. I can only put.
There's all so much red on that card.
I didn't, I didn't see a water bill.
Oh, I don't hear it.
Mine's set up on automatic, I won't worry about it. Mike, do you have anything? David?
Yeah. Couple of things, the, got an updated timeframe on the truck. At this point, they're saying November 28th is the completion date. They're in the process of building the bed on it, so they are moving forward.
11/28's completion date, where's it at?
Brady, in Florida. They made it through the hurricane, so.
Can we get here by December 3rd?
Maybe. I don't know, they'd be pretty close to cutting it on the, going down, doing final inspection and then getting it up, so probably, I'd assume late December, early January, if there's no holdup to push it back any farther.
And I hope it comes in where you can blow the sun during the parade.
I don't. The Airfax order this year is projected to ship out from the distributor in two days. They'll get to the sales rep and then he'll give them the date within a week, so they should be in sometime next week to a week after. Last meeting, I asked about the grant, the grant we filled out for, for Kentucky Fire Commission, and they now have three more. One is for a battery powered combi tool, which is a cutter, sprayer, it's a combination tool that Jaws liked, but it's battery powered. The second one is for a four gas meter, and the third one is for a AD. There's no match on any of these also.
What's the third one for?
An AD.
Defibrillator.
There's no match for any of these, just like the last one. I'm just asking for permission to fill out the grant process. I don't know if we need to do those in three separate ones or can we do them all together?
Those two I couldn't do them together.
I don't see why we couldn't do them together since it's coming from the same place.
I'd like to grant David to apply for all three grants.
I'll second.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by the aye. Post same, motion passes.
If you find out, Shelby, you gotta be separate, just put down three times. I'll second for tomorrow.
That is all I.
Okay, and we did get all the, I guess, all the paperwork signed and stuff turned in for that grant, for the generator.
I haven't seen nothing on it in a while, so I didn't know. I'll have to check back out.
Okay.
I'm going to spam folder again. Was there anything else on there I needed to sign that I need to go back and look at?
No, this was just something that came back, stuff they were needing, and I asked Coley, I gotta be careful because I want to call him Colly, and we sat through that one presentation with the DLG, and she kept calling him Colly. I'm like, it's actually Coley.
I had a.
But he had it, he's already got it done, taken care of what she needed, so on that one.
Multiple contractors come by and look at the place, I guess, for the bidding bids, and I guess they've sent out.
He sent out?
Yeah, go to a bunch of them.
I think we've received, they've received three. I haven't seen anything yet as far as who from. I know, I know who one of them's from just because, I think two of them, because they said on the email that they were going to, but.[1683.62] I know, I know who one of them's from, just cause, I think two of them, cause they said on the email that they were going to, but.
That's the last I've heard on it, and it was just, I guess they're just taking bids at this point, go from there.
I kinda like that, where they do it all, we don't have to.
Pretty nice.
But that is in the works, uh, to get that taken care of, too, so. Shelby, do you have anything?
Yeah, we are gonna have our, um, public hearing on the thirteenth at three o'clock for taxes, so I was just wanting to see when we could do a special call, maybe. Friday.
Thursday afternoon or Friday, Amy is begging.
I know, she just hit me up this morning. And if whenever we can fit it in, I'm, I'm probably flexible.
Cause again, it'll be, it'll be just the three of us, because I know Sandy won't be up and about yet.
Just let me know, and I'll make sure that I'm available.
Well, you want that hearing at Thursday, you say?
It's Thursday at three, so we can do it.
We do it that afternoon.
We get to that noon at five fifteen.
Yeah, that was Thursday afternoon.
And then Amy can get them sent out Friday.
Yeah, I'll be able to do.
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
On the checking account, Amy needs, uh, the names who are gonna be able to transfer, which would be Paul, Amy, myself, uh, be, be transferred to Water Service Sanitation, plus who's authorized to transfer, Al, and signing checks every day, so it'll be the same three, so, almost any minute, it should be fine.
Okay.
You just didn't want to go to a close session?
Yeah. Larry, do you have anything? I haven't got to you yet, I feared you did.
Uh, we are gonna be looking at some handicapped families, uh, hopefully I'll have some information, bring it back next meeting, and see if we're gonna go with them, so.
Okay, we've got one already, right? It's just a matter of getting it all laid out. Set up. Uh, one thing I would like to ask real quick, Christmas dinner, is it, are y'all okay if we do it here, or would you rather go somewhere?
Yes, we'd have it here.
Whatever y'all wanna do.
For the employees, wherever they'd have to go.
Well.
Me, you're on my best, we're all up.
They could all be here, and I'll be honest with you, the last time we went, they, we had it here in town, we probably had as good an attorney as we did, and then one year went to go back to Moonlight, and then about a third of the people showed up, so.
I hear, it was always good here.
And, uh, I've already talked to Susan, so we have a caterer lined up, and she's a heck of a cook, I just gotta let her know when.
Yeah, I really hate it.
Yeah, here's.
Well, we have, I, she's bringing something for you, I know that. No, I think it was dressing.
Okay.
Something, she's, I have to bring this, or Larry won't let me come by.
Who wants that pepper gun? That is some good, I like some stuff like that.
So we're good, is there any night of the week that won't work, other than, I know Wednesday's not a good night, but is there any other night that won't work?
Yeah, you gotta hit something, some work.
Well, I know, but.
You let that have a choice.
But if there's something, like, you have a meet, I know, like, the second Monday won't work.
But how, what, how, where are you planning about when, are you thinking about doing?
Probably sometime in the first or second week, early on.
December?
Yeah, before it gets into a lot of stuff going on.
I was gonna say, November, I'm out of town for a week, cause that, December, I'm home.
Third is on a Saturday, like, maybe the sixth, sixth or eighth. Larry, do you see a problem, or have a night better than?
Not for us, no.
Okay, we'll shoot for maybe one of those two, and get that first for a week of December. Okay.
Uh, speaking of Christmas dinner, ours is December fourth at seven P M. at Old South. It's on a Sunday, they couldn't do this on Saturday, I tried. They said that's the only day they can close down.
It is what it is.
Yeah. But it'll be at seven P M.
And where is it again?
Old South Barbecue, almost won't. You know, they're more welcome to come.
What time?
Seven P M.
Well, I might come in late, but I could all make that one.
Yeah, we try to push back a little bit later, and then, Sunday's not always the best, but when you go to a business, sometimes that's something they won't take you unless you wanna sit in there with a bunch of other people, so. We usually fill the dining room up, so.
It's, food's pretty good.
It is good.
It's the only time I've ever eaten there, it was.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, they do us a pretty solid one price, too, they do us really good, so.
I used to go there for breakfast, Claudia.
And they actually, they quit shut down for everybody, they don't, they're not doing parties now, but they, it's that because we've been going there religiously for years and years, that they're gonna still host us, so. I was with them.
Okay.
Where, where did you look at for the city? What night was you looking at for the city?
December sixth or eighth. I'll check with her and see if the, either, we'll just pick one of them from there, then. Okay, I need to entertain a motion, go into a closed session, discuss the contract.
We go into a closed session.
Second. You got here just in time, didn't you?
Yeah, we gotta make a motion to go back in session.
Yes.
Second.
Going back into open session.
Go back in session.
We did discuss, like I said, we had some contract and legality issues we've been working on and discussing, but no action was taken in that closed session. Does anybody have anything else to bring up? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Great.